My name is Krzysztof Milewski. I'm an interventional cardiologist. And it's my privilege to present the very important topic of innovative technologies in cardiology. Why is it so important to me? This is because we are not only practitioners, but also scientists. And we work closely with for heart failure treatment that was created by engineers, the young engineers like you. They were actually the group of students which came with the idea to support circulation. So they gathered together, they created the company and they started to think how to improve a patient's outcomes. And nowadays, this company is a fast-growing company with a lot of investments. And I hope that it gives you an example how we can cooperate together. So the future is in you. So it's my privilege to present the first speaker, which is our dear colleague from Belgium. However, he comes from Poland, but he works in Belgium as an interventional cardiologist. And he will speak about artificial intelligence in cardiology. Mihal?
Yeah, hello and thank you very much for your invitation. Let me just switch to the screen. I need to share it. Just a second. All right. Great. Can anyone, can everybody see the presentation? Okay. Great. So as Professor Milewski said, my name's Mihal Nedoszutko. I'm an interventional cardiologist. I'm of Polish origin. I have moved to Belgium four years ago, where I'm currently head of the Department of Cardiology in Mons. This is a city in the south of Belgium. But basically, my second life is AI and informatics. And well, during my time in Poland, I have created multiple solutions. I have also been a head of a startup of a company that was creating software for physicians. And today, I wanted to talk to you about a few solutions that are present currently in cardiology and interventional cardiology. This lecture was originally destined for doctors. So some of the concepts, the technical concepts are, let's say, a little bit simplified. But I hope you're going to appreciate what's our perspective on AI. So first, I will get along with a little bit of a definition of what artificial intelligence is, a few of sample applications in everyday life, implementation of AI in medicine in general, and also implementation of AI in interventional and non-interventional cardiology. And then I would like to say a few words about what is a project that we have been developing in my center, which is called NGO AI. So first, well, the term interventional cardiology is a little bit vague. It's used in multiple domains of life. So is it a form of life that is going to bring us to our demise? Or is it maybe a set of applications that do stuff in a way that humans are supposed to do, but maybe not that efficient as it should be? Well, the definition is not unified. So maybe you know the name Jan Leukum, who was the head of, oh, sorry, who was the head of AI for Facebook. The guy is actually French. So the overall definition is that artificial intelligence is basically a set of techniques that allow machines to perform tasks and solve problems normally reserved to humans. This includes, of course, multiple applications, not only neural networks, but also cybernetics, robotics, and of course, machine learning, which I'm absolutely sure you're aware what is. So the applications in real life are just omnipotent. We have AI that runs our smartphones, security surveillance. Your browser history is thoroughly analyzed to give you the best shopping proposition, which sometimes might find bizarre, even though you have never actually spoken of those, but you've thought of. The banking and finance sector is basically based on it. And the autonomous vehicles, well, of a well-known brand that recently has invaded Polish market as well. Currently, the neural networks are basically processing solely on vision. So as you might have possibly heard, recently Tesla has decided to just remove absolutely all of the radars and rely solely on the vision network, even for proximity parking. That's how much they believe, actually, and processing of data only by analyzing the image. Here are early works of full self-driving pilots, autopilot on the streets of San Francisco, detecting basically every possible object and predicting a lot of stuff. Some of the devices are not that advanced. This is a parking sensor. This is early warning collision sensor in a Chinese-made Volvo. Of course, the cognitive applications are also very present in everyday customer-based life. So customer-driven lives, for example, cognitive applications that use translations in real life, language processing, natural language processing. But it goes also the other way. So recently, you can also generate, well, vast loads of text based only on hints. And this is actually quite relevant regarding recent trends of Elon Musk with Twitter, where he claims that most of the content that is present on Twitter is basically made by bots. And I think he might actually not be wrong, although it is quite difficult. Right now, you have just simple libraries that you can ask a few liner hints, which will generate these big paragraphs of data which might be indistinguishable. Of course, the recognition of objects in computer vision, which we have talked about, actually, this is on Polish streets, which is quite a substantial feat. But I believe that also recently you have been hearing about DALL-E 2, stable diffusion. So right now, it has been open to public sources. So there are libraries that allow you to generate images based on text hints. And sometimes the quality of those images are absolutely astounding here. For example, you have eye of the sauron reading a newspaper. And yeah, American astronaut conquering the moon on a horse. I have also had a little bit of fun with it recently. So yeah, this is Barack Obama. There's also an open source library that is currently available. Well, you can have fun with other politicians, like here, for example, you have Boris Johnson wielding various weapons, even though some of them resemble a sausage. Here, there was an iteration of DALL-E mini that I was having fun with. So for example, you can put the hint coronary stent. And yeah, bear in mind that this is not Google image search. This is not something that has been made and photographed and just residues on the internet. This is basically what the neural network generates, thinking what the coronary stent is. So I think it's, yeah, of course, if we look at it with details, it's lacking a little bit of some structure. However, it's quite impressive what AI can do, just imagining objects and creating them. Recently, actually, DALL-E 2 has been released. So this is only the minor version of DALL-E that you have, DALL-E mini. And DALL-E 2 is even more advanced. Here, for example, I have asked what the neural network thinks about human heart with epicardial arteries. So yeah, anatomically, it's, well, actually, it's not that bad, you know? You can see the LED, you can see the right coronary artery. But let's go further. So for example, here's Mona Lisa in COVID protection suit. Since, yeah, originally, I was speaking this presentation to Belgian people. This is a random grid painting where instead of apples, you have hearts as a subject. You might appreciate actually the blend that this thing is doing with abstract concept of object positioning. Spaghetti made out of coronary patates on the plate. Chicken nugget working in a hospital. Yeah, I know, it's creepy, but sky is the limit. And happy dog running in the cat lab. So of course, there's a little bit of diffusion in dog's face, you might call it a face. However, clearly, we see the happiness about working in an interventional cardiology lab. But well, besides the fun, there's some stuff that's also quite impressive. So for example, here you have an example of an image of one of the painters from the Golden Age of Dutch art, girl with pearl earring by Johannes Premier. So you can actually ask right now the neural network what it thinks the expansion of art would be. And this is what the neural network actually thinks. So yeah, I believe it's something quite impressive. But let's go back to, I'm sorry, let's go back to industrial applications. Here, for example, is a neural network that has for a goal orientate the cube in the 3D space defined by the target, by the goal, only by connecting itself through to the actuators. So basically, all the movements are thought and trained by the neural network itself. There is no algorithmic logic of moving those fingers. The neural network has only as a result the location and as an input, the camera, as an, sorry, as an input, you have the image and as an output, you have the corresponding image. Okay, so I believe I don't have to speak too much about the principle of the artificial intelligence to engineers. Anyways, if there are some cardiologists currently in the room, I will just explain a little bit what's the difference between the classical approach and the algorithms. So for example, here, there is a classical algorithm for detecting a certain types of arrhythmia. So you know, the cardiologists, they need to know if the arrhythmia comes from the upper part of the heart or the lower part of the heart. It's called supraventricular or ventricular tachycardia. So here, some famous professors and their assistants and multiple teams of researchers have created algorithms that allow you to detect or try to classify whether it is SVT, so supraventricular RVT. And it's based on certain criteria. So it's about the length of certain waves, it's about concordance of those waves. This is the classical approach, which is validated against some data, but it will never achieve 100% efficiency. While the neural network is nothing else as taking in the bulk of certain data, putting it through the convolutional neural network and giving an output, whether it is like this, whether it is like that, with also a certain degree of probability. Here, for example, the neural network analyzes the ECG image to detect whether the patient has a low ejection fraction or high ejection fraction, which maybe for non-cardiologists is something natural, but for us, it's not. For us, we need to put a special probe and do echocardiography to check if the patient actually has a heart that beats like this or beats like this. And here, you are able just to detect electrical impulses. And there exists no human-made criteria that can tell you if the patient actually has a weak heart or strong heart. And here, the neural network actually is very capable of doing this based solely on the analysis of ECG. So yeah, there is a lot of definitions. There's artificial intelligence, there's machine learning, there's also deep learning. As you know, the revolution in AI has started when we have started embracing using deep learning. So classical machine learning uses defined parameters and is usually user-supervised, is human-supervised. While deep learning basically takes the bulk of data inside, pushes it through the hidden layer of multiple neurons. And thanks to some advanced mathematical algorithms allows you to analyze the data without any kind of human input. Okay, so the principle, of course, for the non-engineers is that we have some kind of input, we have some kind of output in the black box. And basically, we are human, we humans are neural networks. We exist, thanks to, and think, and are conscious. That's what we believe, thanks to neurons and the interconnections between those neurons. So in here, we can say that input is dendrite. The black box, the neural network itself, are the connections between multiple neurons. And the output is accents. And well, the neural networks that we have in our brains consist of almost 86 billion neurons. And this is only the number of neurons. The number of connections between them is actually quite difficult to measure. Current neural networks, we actually measured their performance based not on the number of neurons, but on the number of parameters that can be digested by those neural networks. And basically, they approach to about 40 billion right now, although what the military does right now is a big mystery. Okay, so here, for example, you have a simple input, which is an image of a cat or a dog. And between the input, which is converged into the matrix of pixels, there is a certain set of layers, which we called hidden layers. And then we have an output that gives you with a certain probability and the information whether it is a dog or it is a cat. Here, for example, is an example of a neural network that detects handwriting. Here is the set which is called MMISB. And this is the detection of 10 digits, 10 numbers. It contains about 2,000 hidden neurons with about 1.2 million synapses. So the parameters, it's actually almost 100% efficient. It hasn't been validated against the handwriting of doctors, unfortunately. Some networks can be quite complex. This is an example of ImageNet version 3, which was quite popular quite popular about two or three years ago. Right now, we have new iterations of it. Our project is actually based on ImageNet 3. This is a pre-trained network which uses the principle of enhanced learning. And all of those small dots, there are some mathematical operations and architecture of those networks. And replication and usage of those networks actually is the pinnacle right now of AI research. Okay, so of course, you know well that the neural networks need to be trained. And basically, we are slaves to the IT industry, currently answering whether it is a bus, whether it is a hydrant, whether it is a bicycle. So billions, yeah, billions of users actually feed enormous amount of data that is then used to train. So you, each time that you're validating that you're not a robot, you're basically teaching a neural network a new task. The core of whether a neural network knows whether it is this or whether it is that is something which is called weights. The weights are nothing else as a mathematical representation of relations between each of the neurons, each of those connections. So while training the network, each of those connections is giving a certain significance. This is more important, this is not important. If it's more important, the number goes towards one. If it's less important, the number goes towards zero. Or sometimes, in certain architectures, you can also have negative numbers. So the goal of training the network is actually to finding the numbers that correspond to those weights with the least possible variance between them. So you know, you, okay, this I will skip. Basically, you go over a set of data when training the network. You have a given and tagged amount of data, so you have known images with known results. And then you go and go over and over and over those images in epochs, and the network increases in accuracy. And when it reaches a certain plateau, then it means that the weights actually have reached the level where they cannot be trained anymore. Of course, yeah, it will never reach a full 100%. However, the results of neural networks are far more astounding than any kind of classical algorithms. How much of data do we need? Well, a lot for images. It usually is hundreds of thousands. But usually, for a good accuracy, you need millions. Yeah, as you are well aware of, Tesla is not a car company. It's a software company that basically put SIM cards in every of their vehicle and was transmitting live all of the videos directly to their servers in order to train the neural network. So they were actually possessing so much data that they were able to train this computer vision system with such accuracy that currently they have basically no competition. The European market is just trying to cut them off by introducing some legislation obstacles. This is a funny example of neural network that is training itself in order to beat the TrackMania track as fast as possible, only using as the effectuators, the throttle left and right. So basically, this is a visual representation of what neural network does, training itself in order to reach the final track, the finish line, and the way that is the fastest. All right. Yeah, I think that this is obsolete to tell you that GPUs were the pinnacle of hardware because of the number of cores. So the CPUs were limited to about 8, 16, 32, sometimes 128 cores. And the neural networks, they require a lot of interconnections. So early graphical cards were not sufficient. But recently, with introduction of the chips that Nvidia has pushed forward, there were some graphical cards that just, you know, exploded the efficiency. Currently, the supercomputers operate also on GPU, but the whole process has shifted towards creating chips that are basically dedicated to AI or subchips that are right now called bionic. Yeah, it's for the market, it's quite substantial. And in terms of medical data, there is an estimation that until 2025, the overall market will be about 7 billion euros. And now let's go to some applications in medicine. All right, so I will go quite short about the image recognition in radiology. This is, I think, the most basic example, basically detection of lesions that can be cancerous. So a radiologist right now, they have throngs of scientific projects where they analyze mammographies and they first propose the regions and they try to detect whether this lesion is malign, benign, or normal. Some of the examples of solutions are actually more efficient than radiologists. Here, there is an example that actually is five years old, which actually doesn't detect lesions itself, but shows the regions of interest. Oh, first, you know, the radiologist has to spend some time looking on the overall image to check where is he actually looking, where is he looking for something suspicious? Here in about 10 seconds, faster than the radiologist, the neural network proposes the region of interest. In dermatology, we have detection of also cancerous lesions like melanoma. And here, also ImageNet V3 has been used. This is a publication in Nature with almost 96% efficiency, sorry, under the curve. The neural network was able to distinguish whether it's a cancer or not, far better than dermatologists with a dermatoscope. Cardiology, so the field that we are talking about. There are multiple applications in imaging. So in cardiology, you're trying to visualize the heart and the vessels using multiple modalities. You use ultrasonography, which we called ECO. You use magnetic resonance imaging. So of course, there is an automated detection of heart ejection fraction using neural networks in echocardiography. The same thing goes to the MRI. But also, as I told you before, EKG can detect multiple interesting things, like for example, detect low blood glucose, check the overall health status. Yeah, that's actually a funny, funny paper that tries to check how many years of life the patient actually has ahead of him solely on ECG. But there are better applications that are actually very clinically friendly. So for example, there's this arrhythmia which is called atrial fibrillation, where in very short, the heart doesn't contract in a regular way. And this arrhythmia can be a risk factor for strokes. You need to then give the patient some medication to thin his blood. And it's quite important because it's very, very prevalent in the population here using just a simple camera, smartphone camera. By analysis of the pulse wave, the neural network is able to detect whether the patient is in atrial fibrillation. But it goes a little bit further. You can already detect by analysis of ECG and sinus rhythm, which means in classical standard rhythm, the probability that the patient will develop the atrial fibrillation, which has been not thought of before. Some artificial intelligence algorithms can also detect low ejection fraction. So as I told you before, we can detect using ECG analysis only the possibility that the patient has a heart that contracts weakly. And this actually has been validated against a standard marker, which is called BNP. So a special biomarker that you take out of blood to check if the patient is in heart insufficiency. And then has been actually proven that it is more specific than this marker. Now, interventional cardiology. I hope you're already aware about interventional cardiology. So where we try to use some tools to open closed arteries, to fix valves. So the fields of application in interventional cardiology is mostly angiography analysis, FFR, which is a way to measure the flow in the coronary arteries, outcome prognosis, robotic-assisted PCI, and score predictors. Okay, so here, I'm sorry, that is in French, but it's actually nothing very complicated. So we use, whenever we cure coronary arteries, we very frequently use a method which is called FFR, which is fractional flow reserve. So what we are doing is basically we put a wire inside a coronary artery, which has a pressure sensor. And we detect how much this pressure drops after a narrowing, after a lesion. So the ratio between this and the pressure in aorta, aorta is called FFR. If it's lower than 0.8, a drop of 20%, we consider that a significant lesion. So actually, this is done via a wire that we put in. However, here, for example, is an example of an American application which is called HeartFlow. So using a CT scan, you can detect the flow in, well, first anatomy of the arteries. Then actually, the algorithm detects the disturbances in flow. So instead of actually putting a wire inside, you can do first a CT scan. And this CT scan will show you where the flow is disturbed, where the flow is not disturbed. The only issue is that they have actually a patent and it costs about 1,000 bucks and you need to send it to the US. So there are some alternatives. For example, when we are doing angiography, For example, when we are doing angiography, so inject dye in the artery, we normally evaluate the anatomy of the arteries. However, the neural networks are able actually to reconstruct in 3D the anatomy of the arteries solely based on this dye. And moreover, the neural networks are able to detect what's the flow in those arteries and give an equivalent of the FFR, we call it QFR or VFR. So right now, we are actually having multiple solutions that are being introduced to the market where you don't have actually to do the CT. Just while doing the coronarography, the software will actually propose to you what it thinks about the flow disturbance in the vessel. It's been validated against a small group of millions of Chinese patients. There are other applications, intravascular imagery. We are also using IVUS, which is intravascular ultrasonography, optical coherence tomography. Multiple neural networks are actually developed to increase the overall efficiency of intravascular imaging. Robotic assisted PCI, this is another subject which is for the future. This is a very interesting study. So here, Chinese researchers, of course, they have developed a neural network that solely based on the photo of a patient's face is able to distinguish whether the patient has a coronary artery disease or not. And moreover, if it's a one, two or three vessel disease. So the severity and basically they have confronted it with the classical clinical scales that we are using. As doctors, we are asking whether the patient has pain, what's the specificity of this pain and so on. And basically, just based on a selfie, the neural networks were much more efficient than the classical Diamond Forester or CCS clinical classification applications in detecting whether actually patient has an artifician, has a narrowing. And coming to the end, I just wanted to tell you about the project that we are doing. So there is this thing in interventional cardiology, which is called syntax. And syntax is basically a very, very bad calculator. What the scientific societies demand us to do is to decide how are we treating the patient? Whether we are stenting the arteries, whether we are giving the patient to the hands of the surgeons or we are just giving the patient medication. And we call it PCI angioplasty, CABG or CABG, the coronary artery bypass graft done by the cardiac surgeon or optimal medical therapy, OMT. And what we need to do theoretically is we need to calculate a very complex score of severity of the lesions, where you need to decide whether this lesion is calcified, not calcified, bifurcated. For each of those lesions, you need to calculate a certain score. And then if it's above thirty-two in this and this type of configuration, then you give them to the surgeons. And basically, nobody, well, very few people use it, mostly for scientific purposes. However, it's very well validated. So here comes AI. So yeah, I met this guy. He's an engineer in Monz, in the south of Belgium. His name is Zawilisap. And we actually talked a little bit that we can use some of this data that we have in our cat lab, so coronarographies, to try to train a neural network. Well, basically, there was one thousand three hundred angiographies extracted, anonymized. And since these are films, all of those frames in there have consisted of about one million, one point five million images. So the bulk of the work was actually creating software for tagging. So basically, this is written in Python and it goes through the whole dataset of those images. I think it was about one hundred and sixty gigs. And what is the most difficult part in AI in medicine is basically creating good datasets. So most of the work actually went into creating the software that will be able to tag it rapidly using just, you know, keyboard shortcuts. Because an interventional cardiologist basically sees everything immediately. The only issue is that if you give them a mouse and you need to go click here, click here, click here, click here in order to tag this number of images, this is gonna be difficult. So here, we have created classes, detection of right, left coronary artery. We have used a cluster of computers in the University of Monz. Unfortunately, it was quite lengthy, about one week to train. However, the accuracy was quite satisfactory, ninety-eight percent in distinguishing between the left and the right coronary artery. And right now, we are at the level where we are trying to ask the network whether the lesion exists in the image, so the significant lesions exist or not. And currently, we are at the level of seventy-six percent. So the next step is perfecting the dataset. And we invite you very much to participate because basically, all the studies need to be non-biased, so all your centers can include. Check the segmentation, the TMI flow, identify the lesion and finally calculate the syntax. So I hope that one day, we will be just able, instead of having those calculators, to use a specific black box that will tell us with a bigger probability what we should do with the patient. So take home message. Every week, we're seeing breakthroughs in AI technology. And medicine is one of the most important fields of applications. The applications in cardiology is cognitive computing, computer vision, ECG, QFFR. And one thing that I really like to stress is that AI won't replace physicians, but those who want to embrace AI might be left behind. Thank you very much for your attention. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Mihao, hello, can you hear us?
I cannot hear you, unfortunately.
Okay, we need to proceed. It was an excellent presentation. And for the sake of time, we need to proceed. And now I would like to invite my colleague, my friend, we are working on everyday basis, Peter Buschmann. He is a director of our preclinical department, as well as interventional cardiologists working in Bielskobyowa. And he will talk about Polish bioresorbable stents and aortic artificial valves. Peter?
Thank you very much for this kind invitation. It's every year, annual. It's a great pleasure to be here at each annual meeting and talk about the future, the future, which is currently becoming a present of cardiology, medicine and interventional cardiology. Following this excellent talk by Mihao, which is could be a future of cardiology, now we want to go back a little bit to the devices, which still need to be implanted by human, maybe in the future by robot. And they need to be diagnosed and qualified for the surgery or intervention so far by cardiologists, but maybe in the future by artificial intelligence. So it is my great honor to present two projects, which were made in a team with Syrian University of Technology and Biological and Department of biomedical engineering. It's been a great pleasure to participate in those two projects, which are now, one is commercialized, the other one is, I believe, is going to be commercialized. Those are two projects. The first one is the novel polymer bioresorbable vascular scaffold. And the second is the novel polymeric valve. These two projects were most recently presented at Innovation Theater at TCT in Boston. It's been enormous pleasure and therefore it's an enormous pleasure to present it today. So when it comes to implantable devices, you must realize that we physician dream about the device to disappear in the future. So following its crucial implementer role, which is revascularize, open the artery, fix the valve, we would love it to disappear. Because in the future, it may cause problems. Whatever you're implanting in your human body, sooner or later, it may cause problems simply by inducing inflammatory reaction and causing very late events. So in terms of stents, in fact, the metallic stents which we are implanting right now, they're actually very good, they cause very little trouble. So making a polymeric stand that would fully biodegradable is extremely difficult because we need to overcome the limitations of plastic, of a polymer. And yet, the competitor has got extremely good results, which is metallic stents. So we believe that paradigm from metallic to polymeric is actually happening. It's actually happening and will happen in the future as a holy grail of interventional cardiology. So how it should work? So we implant a stand, we open the vessel, we revascularize it. And we're hoping after twenty-four months and even earlier now that the polymer will degrade and will leave only a fully healthy vessel behind. As you can see, this is the acute result. And this is the result of the same sand that has fully disappeared after twenty-four months in the porcine coronary arteries. However, this is the dream. And the reality was that in a clinical setting, the first generation polymeric bioresorbable stents failed to show superiority over contemporary drug-eluting metallic drug-eluting stents. More stent thrombosis, more repeated revascularization and more adverse events. This is not what we were hoping for. And unfortunately, our dream has faced the reality. But the future is in the material. And the better the material, the better the polymer, the thinner the struts. We believe that we're going to overcome those limitations. We've known for ten years that the thinner the strut, the better the outcome, the less injury to the vessel wall. So we need to achieve pretty much exactly the same with biodegradable polymers. The struts of the first generation biodegradable polymers were thick. There were hundred fifty to two hundred micron thickness struts. Whereas novel metallic struts, ultra-thin, they reach even seventy microns. So in the next future, in the future of bioresorbable stents, we need to lessen this struts thickness. So what were the reasons that biodegradable stents failed? Multiple. And polymer thickness was not the only reason. Actually, it turns out it might have been only one of the few reasons. So number one, this polymer is not biocompatible. It crystallizes and causes inflammatory reaction. Number one. Number two, actually, it turned out that it does not degrade in every case. And we differ and patients differ and the lesions differ. So in some patients, it might have degraded after a year and a half, but it turned out that in some patients, it may degrade three years after. And if it did not degrade, the thicker struts, they lose their tensile strength, they lose their radial force and they fell down into the lumen of the artery and caused thrombosis and stent thrombosis and myocardial infarction. So now we're in a generation of second generation DRS. They mostly focus on making the struts thinner from polyellic acid. But I believe, and what we've shown in our research and our grant and our novel polymer, that thickness, it's not the only problem. Commercially, ninety-five of these persons are not present of these stands are not present on the market despite improved results over first generation stands, despite almost similar or even better results when compared to best-in-class metallic drug-eluting stands. Those are the studies, the latest studies that in a limited number of patients, they show non-inferiority of metallic stand struts. However, however, as I said, they did not meet our clinical expectations. And so far, we're very reluctant to use them, to move them in a clinical setting because of the failure of the first generation devices. They seem to be very promising in the other territories, not only coronary arteries, but also in our limb arteries, where we want the metallic stand to disappear. And those are early clinical results of the second generation Absor platform, which are very, very promising with ninety percent adverse events free survival up to five or six years. So we must realize what happened with, we must understand the mechanics and the biology of what happened with first generation stands. Number one, and I believe it's a very crucial reason, is the limitations of polyellicite. You know the best that to get the metallic strand of polyellicite, we need to anneal it. And by annihilation and basically heating it up, we change its structure from amorphous to crystalline or semicrystalline. Our body doesn't like it, it causes inflammation. But to get the metallic strand of the biodegradable polymer, we need to anneal it. However, this causes problems. So therefore, with the leaders in Polish medtech field in the healthcare industry, we created the Polish grant, we obtained the first Polish grant for the first Polish stand. And we created a novel polymer. So it's not only a polyellicite, which has mechanical properties of rigid material, but along biodegradation time, we created a polymer with polyglacylactite with high strength but faster degradation. We made multiple computational tests to improve the radial strength. We created the final prototype. As you can see, it's absolutely fully amorphous, it's not crystalline. And it has been crimped into one millimeter of, into one millimeter, which is extremely good result in interventional cardiology. Following this preclinical bench testing and computational model testing, obviously, we compared it in the clinical setting. We implanted close to fifty stents. We got the best number of stents at twenty-eight day follow-ups. And we compared it with PLA, with polyellicite, hundred twenty microns, hundred fifty microns. So these were the reference stences that were comparable, almost the same as the Absor stand. And we compared with the thicker struts, two hundred microns, our novel polymer made of PLA and PLGA. And we observed with animals for twenty-eight, ninety days and hundred and eighty day follow-up. These are the in vivo results of optical coherence tomography. So this is the imaging modality that looks inside the vessel and tells you how the stand looks like using light and laser at twenty-eight days. Please note, we have very nice patent vessels that are fully healed in all cases. The restenosis, which we are mostly afraid of, so the return of the stenosis was very acceptable. And despite the fact that it was not a drug-eluting stance, neither of them were, we obtained very good results, patent vessels in all arteries. And as you can see, please note the difference between the appearance of the stand struts. So the struts of the novel amorphous material are fully hydrophilic. The lights goes through them, very different from the PLA polymer, which are basically black and not hydrophilic. And therefore, they may cause reaction. What we really liked is that these stands grow in time. So they're uncaging the vessel, they restoring vasomotoric function of the vessel. So the vessel is not caged and it allows to release nitrous oxide, which allows this vessel to grow in time. And when we looked at the pathology, what we've noticed, please note the inflammatory score that in the novel polymer, we have absolutely or very low inflammation when compared to PLA. So therefore, our hypothesis that using a novel polymer can overcome the limitations of the polymer has been proven. We got a very good internalization score, so the stand has to be fully covered with endothelium. It was fully covered already at ninety days, eighty percent at eighty days, with absolutely no vessel damage when compared to PLA polymer, the previous Absor stand. And obviously, what is really interesting is the long-term follow-up. Please note that those vessel lumens at ninety-day follow-up and the same lumens and hundred and eighty-day follow-up, these vessels grow. So the purpose and the rationale for utilization of bioresorbable scaffolds has been confirmed. These vessels are growing in time. And most importantly, this is on the top panel. You can see on the left-hand side, you can see thirty-day follow-up. And at the right side, you can see thirty-five, sixty-five, hundred-day follow-up. Please note that these stands are already gone or nearly gone at three hundred and sixty-five days. Obviously, our biggest, largest sample was determined for thirty and ninety-day follow-up, where we achieved outstanding result, good results, which are almost energetic and cause no inflammation with very low stenosis. Our second project, which was presented at TCT by Professor Buschmann, who was a leader of this project, is a novel polymeric leaflet-based TAVAR system. What is the TAVAR? Tasked as a aortic valve replacement for students. We are replacing the human aortic valve via femoral artery, via minimal cut-down or no cut-down at all, via a bottleneck. So this is the future, we believe, in interventional cardiology. These numbers tend to grow, the market is huge and it's going to become bigger and bigger as the societies are getting older. And the demand for less invasive or very, or almost less invasive when compared to surgery operations are going to increase. Moreover, TAVI has shown increasing number of patients, younger patients. And there are some limitations of current valves that need to be overcome. Most importantly, we're implanting those valves in younger patients. So the durability of biologic valves, which are very, very good in terms of biocompatibility, how is a little worse when it comes to long-term follow-up? They last about ten to fifteen years. They last about ten to fifteen years, and then you need to replace them. So because of the structural valve deterioration. So that's why we figure out a novel polymeric valve, which is made of polymer, not a biological tissue, not similarly biocompatible. And the novelties, there are multiple novelties in this valve. So it's not only the polymeric, but it's true fourteen-profile size, so it's really small. Number two, the polymeric valves are fully biocompatible. They are made of also copolymers. We have a proprietary leaflet valve formation. So we don't use sutures similar to biological counterparts and competitors, very low sutures. This, as you can see, this valve is being made by electrospinning of a material into the valve, and it is proprietary, and it has been patented. So we use very low sutures. Number two is we have self-positioning system. Self-positioning system with left ventricle protection system device. They secure the left ventricle from injuries, from ruptures, and they allow us to avoid mistakes by self-positioning of the valve. And this is the material in SAM. As you can see, it's microporous, so the endothelium is getting into these holes and making this leaflet fully healed, which I will show later in the preclinical studies. This is how the valve is created. It's basically a sock, and then it's inserted into the valve. And only few sutures are required to, only few sutures are required to create leaflets and commissures. So when compared to competitors, sutureless or very low sutures required. And with our consortium partners, we patented these solutions, five to six solutions. You must remember that it's a very competitive market, and the competitors has immensely patented their solutions. So having your own intellectual property is an extremely important thing. We performed long-term durability mechanical testing. So far, sixty millionth test. We need more, we need two hundred. But that was sufficient to prove biological compatibility and durability in animal model. For this project, we created a special dedicated animal model to test valves and predict their outcome into the clinical setting already in the phase of animal testing. This paper was published in JACC this year. And we, number one, for the first time, we achieved ability to anchor the valve and get very good but long-term results with very low mortality, less than fifteen percent. Previous studies, they had mortality of seventy, eighty percent. So they were very difficult regulatory studies, and it was very difficult to predict their actual outcome in a clinical setting. So the polymeric valves, we implanted sixteen TAVIs and dedicated them for thirty, ninety, and hundred-day follow-up. This is the results of the mean pressure gradient at thirty, ninety, and hundred-day follow-up. They're very low, and in fact, they tend to get lower in time. So this is the gradient, this is the flow that goes through the valve. And in terms of biocompatibility, which was our biggest concern, because it's an artificial material, it's not a biological one, which basically heals itself. At terminal follow-ups, all the leaflets remained free from thrombin in all cases. There were only some microthrombi, which we normally also see in the biological valves. And there was some scantification, only scantification, arising from the bonding sign, not from the bonding itself. So we've proven great biocompatibility. And if you look at these pictures, what we really wanted to achieve is that actually the endothelium goes into those microporuses and creates kind of biological appearance of the polymeric valve. You must remember, as young engineers, it is not the aim and not the target to make many studies. Of course, studies are great, but it's important to commercialize and bring the product into the market. That's why we are finished with commercialization of this valve. And we believe that in two years, two, three years, we're going to initiate and then finish first-in-man studies and get the clinical approval for these valves. Thank you very much.
Peter, thank you for your excellent presentation. And of course, congratulations. This is the fantastic example of close cooperation between physicians and engineers. And this session is all about, yes?
Exactly. The future is here, and I hope that you will remember one day that it's the teamwork and it's our ideas that engineers may come true. Because we, as clinicians, we know what we expect. But it's you with our new materials, new solutions can help us. And that's what we have been doing with bioengineers from Sylvestre University of Technology.
Yeah, and there's an ongoing discussion that we believe both sides, I mean physicians and engineers, that you, as a young engineers, should be present during our everyday physician's work. So you should see the patients with us, you should help us to diagnose them and treat them. And based on this, to define the problem and to find a solution for the problem, yes?
Exactly. So we worked with many companies that developed novel products at first-in-man and preclinical setting. What is really fascinating that, especially among the Western companies from US, California, and Western Europe, the engineers are already there. And sometimes, they even know the anatomy better than us, which is really fascinating. So understanding biology, anatomy, and from the other side, from physician's side, understanding the engineering, understanding the possibilities will create great teams and great products.
So you are more than welcome to visit our clinics within the structure of American Heart of Poland. I believe that we can do something good together for our patients.
Thank you very much. So it is my, I will, let me introduce now Professor Milewski with his lecture on novel therapies for heart failure. It's not only pharmaceuticals, but also we're getting closer and closer for treating heart failure with devices.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you again for inviting me. And it's my great pleasure to chair this session. I would like to present you some novelties in the area of heart failure. So first of all, heart failure is a real problem that we meet on everyday basis, and it concerns up to two percent of all our patients. However, heart failure is a problem especially in older patients. Because after seventy, twenty percent of our patients suffer from heart failure. So it's difficult to treat them, to diagnose them. And really, we need a lot of new innovative technologies to help them to improve the quality of life and to prolong the life in a good condition. However, now we are in the new era of heart failure diagnosis and treatment. And see what we have on the pipeline. First of all, artificial intelligence. It was discussed earlier, so I don't want to go into the details, but it definitely can help us with the heart failure patients. Implantable devices and wearable devices. It cannot only treat the patients by providing electrical shock, for example, when there is the severe arrhythmia, but also it can diagnose. They diagnose the ECG and, for example, volume overload. We have home devices that we are trying to use more and more frequently to diagnose patients. For example, we can easily detect atrial fibrillation, this dangerous type of arrhythmia. We have, of course, a new drugs. And these drugs, I must say, they are excellent. For example, here you can see the angiotensin neprilisin inhibitor in significantly change the follow-up of our patients. And we have it, we have it on everyday basis. However, we have also drugs like SGLT2 inhibitors that were previously used for diabetic patients. And finally, we were able to introduce these patients for heart failure patients. Also, these drugs showed that they can also decrease the blood pressure. So we have more and more excellent drugs. Of course, we have heard about the first man that received a heart from a genetically altered pig. I think that this is the beginning. Of course, we have genetic testing. We can, for example, qualify the patients that will get the benefits from the specific type of treatment. Of course, but this is not about the drugs, the devices, it's all about the system. We have new system to help the patients with heart failure. We can engage the patient in the system. So he is involved in the diagnosis, in the treatment. And I believe that this is the future, to create the systems for heart failure patients. Yes, it works, it works. And the good thing is that we have more and more devices that are coming up to the market. And here, I found an interesting paper that in this paper, the authors tried to classify the devices that are new on the market. And they classified these devices based on similarities to same pathophysiological mechanisms and to the drugs. And here you can see the device example is a splenic denervation. And this is similar to nitrates that we are using for many, many years in heart failure patients. And you can see, by giving a nitrate to the patient, we can increase venous capacitance. So this, how this planning denervation can work. So we have a lot of devices that mimics this action of drugs. But you know, when we place this device in the human body, we can achieve the same goal as a drug. However, we can avoid all this bad effects of high doses of drugs. So let me present you some examples. It has been known for many, many years that when we try to change the autonomic nervous system, we can change the way how the heart works. And this is so-called new old target for minimally invasive therapies. Because as you can see on this picture from nineteen fifty-two, there was a surgical approach to change the action of nervous system. However, it was too invasive. And simply, the doctors, they skipped this method, and they forgot about this method for almost fifty years. However, later on, when we came with less and less invasive methods of heart failure treatment and diagnostic, et cetera, this method was born again. And as you can see today, we are using special electrophysiological catheters that we can place really minimally invasively to the patient body. And we can change the way how the nervous system acts. And this is the example. Once we place such a catheter into the cart and we provide like electric impulses to the heart, we can really change the hemodynamics of the heart. So you can see the slide, which shows you off and on. On is a black box. Once we stimulate the heart, we significantly increase mean arterial pressure and heart contractility by not changing at all the heart rate. So this simply work. So how to use it in clinical, everyday practice? In our center in Bielskobijowa, we have a novel program, clinical program called Cardiognomic. It's a novel neuromodulation therapy. How does it work? We simply place the special type of stent, like this is nineteen-old stent, placed in right pulmonary artery. And as you can see, the stent has small electrodes that deliver energy to target nerve. And by stimulating the nerve, we can significantly change the patient's hemodynamics. It doesn't work. Can you change the slide? Yeah. Move forward, please. It's a technology, don't worry. Yeah. Come back. Okay, yeah. So there was the first example. This is another example, how we can modulate visceral modulation. So for example, when we have a patient with congestive heart failure, so we have too much fluid inside the body, we can puncture his spine and deliver the drug, which is called like docaine. And thus, we can significantly dilate the vessel in his body. And by doing this minimally invasive approach, we can significantly change, increase right atrial pressure, wedge pressure. We can significantly increase cardiac index and left ventricle contractility. Another interesting example. It's a device called intra-atrial shunt. It was placed between right and left atrium. Why? To unload the pressure and volume overload from the left atrium. So by doing the small hole between those two atrias, we can shift the fluid from left atrium to right atrium. And thus, the left ventricle can contract much better. So there was the hope that it will work. However, the reduced LAB HF2 trial showed some disappointing results. Why? There is always the reason that something is not working properly. So what was the reason? That there was responders and non-responders to this therapy. And as you can see, when the patient has a high pulmonary pressure and we shift the fluid from left side to right side and to pulmonary artery, we simply overload the pulmonary circulation. So those patients who are already sick because of pulmonary artery, they got too much fluid, and we can simply make his prognosis worse. So we should classify the patient. We should not only design the therapy, but think what is the appropriate patient for the specific therapy. So by doing this observation, a new right-to-right shunt was developed. And this is RIVET pulmonary-to-venous shunts. And as you can see, this is the same type of shunt, but it's not placed between right and left atrium. It's actually placed between pulmonary artery and superior vena cava. So it shifts the fluid overload back to venous circulation. And here is the comparison, how did it work, the first version of the shunt. It was placed, as you can see here, between the atrias. And it simply removed the part of the blood from the left atrium. However, as I told you, it increased pulmonary flow significantly. However, in this new system, we have connection between pulmonary artery and superior vena cava. So it not only reduces the pressure in the pulmonary flow, but it also, it means that all oxygenated blood contributes to systemic output. So we hope that this device will be easily accessible for all the patients with heart failure and will change the follow-up. And here is the clinical confirmation of this right ventricle afterload relief. You can see that the mean pulmonary artery pressure decreased significantly after six months after device placement. Here also see that the quality of life of this patient significantly improved. And the results of six mini walking tests also significantly improved in all these patients with this implant. At the introduction to this session, I have told you about Puzzle Medical Company. And here is the example of excellent device. And this device was actually created by two students. And how they did it? They just went to the clinical practice. They didn't read only the book, but they were present at the everyday work of cardiologists. And they observed that current treatments for heart failure are not optimal, are very costly, and are invasive for the patients. So they got a lot of funds for the device. And now, after four years, they are really big company, Canadian company. And here is the pump that they invented. You have three pumps in the row. Yes? And you have anchor and docking system. So once you place this system through the femoral artery to the descending aorta, you pull up-down the first pump to the second pump, and both this one and two to third pump to this docking system. And then you are opening the anchor, which is actually the nineteen-old stent. And you can leave the pump... And you can leave the pump in the place and patient can get up to 10 liters per minute of extra blood flow. And patient can, you know, function on everyday basis with a stand inside and with a pump that really help his heart. Here is another, probably the last example of what is going on in terms of heart failure treatment. This is the system for pulmonary artery so-called bending. And as you can see, this is the normal heart situation when the left heart and right ventricle has the same stable proportions. However, if left ventricle fails because of heart failure, the left heart becomes bigger and bigger and it shifts this intraventrical septum towards right ventricle. So we have severe heart failure. So once we place so-called bends on the pulmonary artery, we will start to train the right heart, which is really insufficient. And after a few weeks of such overload and such a training, we produce right ventricle hypertrophy. And by doing this, we again make the right ventricle stronger. And this right ventricle shifts back the intraventrical septum towards left ventricle. And this idea was brought from pediatrician practice. It was done surgically and it was used in end-stage dilated cardiomyopathy in young children. It was done surgically. However, because of development of minimally invasive therapy, it was feasible to do it interventionally, not opening the chest. So here are the results of this technology. You can see reduced LV volumes, left ventricle volumes at six months, left ventricle ejection fraction, so it means contractility improvement, and also improved physical capacity when measured by six-minute walking test. So this devices simply works. So let me summarize. The role of devices supporting the heart failure therapies will become more and more important, especially with the development of miniaturization and minimally invasive techniques. The presented technologies are extremely promising, having well-established pathophysiological background. All these innovations are usually dedicated to selected patient populations. As you could see, there is no one device that fits to all heart failure patients. And their safety and clinical efficacy remains to be proven, especially over longer follow-ups and in larger patient populations. So thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Chris, for this outstanding talk, or interesting talk. You, as engineers, you need to realize that we're facing in Poland now close to 1 million of patients with heart failure. 800,000 are diagnosed, but we believe it's million and above. So the medical need is huge. You must realize that patients with heart failure have similar or even worse prognosis than cancer patients. Many of us don't realize that. Among the survey of patients of population from Western Europe, the survey asked a question, what we die of? Obviously, almost everyone said we die of cancer, but the number one killer in Europe is heart disease. And heart failure is one of the most with coronary artery disease, number one, and heart failure many times as a consequence. So looking for new devices that would prolong patients' life, improve their outcomes and improve their quality of life is extremely important. And heart is a pump, as our mentor, Professor Liga, said. And because it's a pump, there are numerous engineering methods and ways to increase its contractility, to increase the effectiveness of pump. And this is our common ground and common need. So thank you very much. I believe we have not many time for discussion. So I'm gonna invite Professor Adam Janas, who's gonna tell us about innovations in electrotherapy.
Thank you for invitation. It's a pleasure to speak about innovation in electrotherapy. Gilanomarukale was the first physician who developed that pools, low pools, is connected with Syncope. So this is the start of electrotherapy. First piezmaker was implanted in 1958 in Sweden. It works only three hours. Patient has 26 change of that device. However, he outlived the surgeon and the engineer who invented this device. Nowadays, the road from the really simple epicardially pulse generator, it's gonna go through the synchronous pacing with dual chamber device to leadless piezmaker, who could pace synchrony with synchrony the atrium and the ventricle. Moreover, piezmakers, which are used in everyday practice, nowadays are ready MRI. So the patient who has implanted this device could have diagnostic in magnetic field, in magnetic resonance. Moreover, it's, I think it's gold standard that it could be checked remotely. So physician can check from the hospital, patient who is at home. However, next step is to miniaturize the piezmaker. It's this called Mica by Medtronic. It's implanted through the catheter to the right heart. And it's small like coin. It's the size of the coin. And it could stimulus both the atrium and the right ventricle. Battery list for at least six years. Here is on X-ray, on X-ray, Mica in right ventricle. So with this very small device, patient has no scar, no bump on the chest, no visible sign that here she has paced piezmaker. Moreover, we eliminated complications like infection, hematoma, skin erosion over the device. There is no leads. So we have no fractures of the leads, no insulation branches, no venous thrombosis, no tricuspid regurgitation, which are often complications after implantation of piezmakers. This figure shows that this technology brings us to another level because of low, very low complication ratio and by improving quality of life of the patient. Patient forgot that has a piezmaker. However, biotechnological industry works to try to convert STEAM cells to the piezmaker cells. That this road could take us to next step to put programmed, to implant programmed cells into heart. And patients with blocks, with some kind of rhythm disturbance could be treated without any metallic device. But it's far away from us right now. In history of implantable cardioverter defibrillator starts 10 years later than piezmakers. Proof of concept was in 1970. But ICDs were routinely implanted in the early 90s for patient with sudden cardiac arrest. Nowadays, we have its first-line therapy for patient with heart failure with low ejection fraction because of prophylaxis of sudden cardiac death. Those patients have increased risk of sudden cardiac death. And cardioverter defibrillator is device who protects them from it. Like novel piezmakers, cardioverter defibrillators are, could be checked remotely from patient's home. And they are also MRI-ready. So patients with implanted device could have diagnostic with magnetic resonance. Next step in cardioverter defibrillators are leadless ICDs, however, with possibility of pacing. You can see here in right ventricle, it's a device very similar to Mica, to piezmaker. However, it is, it's connected with the ICDs wireless and it could stimulate the right ventricle. This approach has many, many positive things because we don't have leads in the heart. And this ICDs, which is on the side of the chest, could be charged through the skin. So there is no need to replace it. With the small lead in the right ventricle, it could apply all therapy that ICDs with leads do that. So we, this is hybrid of Mica and subcutaneus cardioverter defibrillator. There is group of patients who need guard for their heart rhythm, but only for some time, temporarily. Life vest wearable cardioverter defibrillator, it's device which is designated for patients after MI or after heart inflammation when we suspect that patient with time improve and that implant won't be good for him. It's not, it won't be necessary. So there is a vest with the electrodes and with the battery and computer here. If the computer detect ventricular arrhythmias, it works, it prophylaxis sudden cardiac death without implanting any device under the skin. It was the life vest where cardioverter defibrillator have pretty nice outcome in 90 days because usually it takes three months to hard to cure after MI or after inflammation. In the device group, there was significant lower all-cause death in that patient. Next interesting and novel thing in electrotherapist Baro Neosteam. It's a stimulator of carotid sinus. Stimulation of carotid sinus, decrease heart rate, decrease heart remodeling, cause vasodilatation, improve duresis and decrease renin secretion. Those mechanism are very important for treatment of heart failure. And the device is implanted over, under the collarbone on the chest. And the lead is placement over the carotid sinus. It's dedicated for patient with low ejection fraction, with very low exercise capacity, with no restriction for, there is no restriction for atrial fibrillation, which is very important. It was tested. It was 264 patients were randomized. And patients with Baro's team has a much more exercise capacity, have better quality of life and what more, what most important, have decreased level of intubular BNP, which is related to mortality. Very interesting approach also for heart failure. It's vagus nerve pacing. It's, it has similar properties like carotid sinus stimulation. However, this device is also not implantable. So patient have device in his hand and in each day, he must stimuli some time. However, these devices improve significantly exercise capacity. However, none of device which stimuli vagus nerve improve all-cause mortality. And this is first approach to telemedicine. This is two leads. This two leads ACG and that cables goes to the second, to the second building in the university. So that was the first approach for teleACG. Thank you for attention.
So ladies and gentlemen, and Adam, thank you for your excellent talk. And we must close the session because we are running out of time. I think, would like to thank Marek Gzik for inviting American Heart of Poland to this excellent conference. And one more, I must say that we are waiting for your students in our clinics because I hope that we can do something together in our RND. You are more than welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I would like to thank you for co-organization of the conference and for the organization of the session. My special thank to the authors of the presentation during the session. I think the session was very interesting. And let's again thank the authors of the session with the applause. And now, now I invite you for a coffee break.